I'd like to call this meeting to order. Jim, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Father God, thank you for the blessings of this day. Tomorrow's election day, help us make wise decisions. Help council make wise decisions and bless the United States of America, state of Georgia, and city of Jasper. Amen.
John led the pledge and I believe we looked out the window there, he might be able to see a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council has a copy of the agenda. I believe from one we sent out earlier, I see a new edition of what maybe what you received. Item A and the executive session, which is under A, item A, would entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve agenda?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Being in our favor, put your hand. Thank you, council. I'm meeting Ms. Snavy. Councilwoman Snavy is on vacation and she won't be with us this evening. And of course, we're still one short until after the election tomorrow. Lisa, the minutes of the October 10th, 2016 regular meeting?
Monday, October 10th, 2016, Mayor Weaver called a meeting to order conflict at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invocation, councilmember Ann Snavy lead in their recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weaver stated that councilmember John Faust was not able to attend this council meeting. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hoyle read the minutes of the September 12th, 2016 regular meeting. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to adopt the minutes. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Assistant Chief Fon Hedrick to present an update to council on the hazard mitigation grant for the emergency generators. Chief Hedrick stated that the city had received notification that the additional money requested from FEMA and GMA had been approved. He stated the original grant amount was $361,231 with the city share $54,185. He stated the revised grant amount is now $472,211 with the city share at $70,832. The increase in the total cost of the project is $110,980 with the city's responsibility increasing $16,647. Finance Director Lisa Hoyle stated that we had room in the budget for the increase due to some 2016 projects moved to 2017 budget. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to proceed with the project in 2016. Councilmember Jim Looney made such motion. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Attorney Bill Pickett to present the second reading of the amendment to Chapter 10, Article 9, Sales for Consumption on Premises, Section 10-309, Paragraph C, to change the food and alcohol ratio from 75-25 to 50-50. See attached ordinance changes read by Attorney Pickett. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adopt the ordinance changes read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C, under old business, Attorney Pickett presented the second reading of the amendment to Chapter 10, Article 9, Sales for Consumption on Premises, Section 10, Sections 10-343, 10-344, and 10-345, to change the interest and penalty calculations required by House Bill 960 for delinquent alcohol taxes. Following the second reading of Section 10-343, councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the ordinance changes read. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Following the second reading of Section 10-344, councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to adopt the ordinance changes read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Following the second reading of Section 10-345, councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to adopt the ordinance changes read. Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item D, under old business, Attorney Pickett presented the second reading of the amendment to Chapter 74, Article 5, Hotel Motel Exiles Tax, Section 74-116, Paragraph B, to change the interest and penalty calculations required by House Bill 960 for delinquent taxes. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to adopt the ordinance changes read. Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item E, under old business, Attorney Pickett presented the second reading of the amendment to Chapter 74, Article 3, Adverbal Tax, Section 74-51, Paragraph B, to change the interest and penalty calculations required by House Bill 960 for delinquent taxes. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adopt the ordinance change as read. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Allison Woody with JYSA. Mayor Weaver stated that the mayor's golf tournament fundraiser for JYSA was a success. Mayor Weaver then presented a check for $10,000 to JYSA as a contribution from the 2016 mayor's golf tournament. Ms. Woody thanked the city for the contribution. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Shane Finley of 125 Town Creek Trail to discuss the noise levels at Rocco's Pub. Mayor Weaver also called on Chief Level to address council. Mr. Finley stated that he and his neighbors had made several complaints to the city regarding loud music after 10:00 PM at Rocco's. Chief Level stated that the city police had issued two citations to Rocco's for violation of the city's ordinance. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that the city could file an injunction with Superior Court. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that the city police give Rocco's one final warning if the noise continues and to notify Rocco's that if the violation is not corrected, the case will be turned over to Superior Court. Councilmember Jim Looney made such motion and councilmember Ann Snavy seconded. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Item C, under new business, the mayor recognized Sonny Underwood, director of planning and zoning, to present an application for selling alcohol, beer, and wine by the package from the owner of Murphy Oil USA to be located at Old Philadelphia and Sammy McGee Boulevard. Mr. Underwood stated that the background check was not yet received from the state, but he is requesting that the council approve permission to continue the application process pending that upon receipt of the background check, there is nothing that would prevent him from obtaining an alcohol license. Councilmember Ann Snavy made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application pending the background check comes back satisfactory. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item D, under new business, Mr. Underwood presented to council a request for a license to sell distilled spirits by the drink from Hans Ruffe, owner of the Woodbridge Restaurant, for the remainder of this year. He stated that the Woodbridge previously had a distilled spirits license but had let the license lapse. He stated that the prorated cost of the 2016 license renewal would be $750 and that if he renewed the license for 2017, the Woodbridge would owe the city an additional $3,000 prior to the last council meeting in 2016. Attorney Pickett stated that Mr. Ruffe must fill out the city's application for liquor license form and also notify the state and obtain a state license. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the license for the distilled spirits license for 2016 for the remainder of the year. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Finance Director Lisa Hoyle to present the 2016 tax millage rate as advertised and as considered in the upcoming budget and the recommended homestead exemptions. She recommended council adopt a millage rate of 4.683 mills for the upcoming 2016 tax billing. Ms. Hoyle also recommended to council that the city continue to offer a $3,000 homestead exemption and $4,000 homestead exemption for citizens 65 and older. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adopt the millage rate at 4.683 mills and the homestead exemptions as recommended. Councilmember Jim Looney made such motion and councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item F, under new business, Lisa Hoyle presented to council a resolution to submit an application for funding from the Georgia DNR Recreational Trails Fund. Mayor Weaver stated that if approved, the city could receive a $100,000 grant and would be required to match a portion of the funding. Following discussion by council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion, the city accept the resolution for the grant application and match by the city. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion and councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item G, under new business, Mayor Weaver presented for the council's approval a change in the city's public defender to Corey DeBoer and Jenny Carver, Carver and DeBoer, PC of 360 West Main Street, Canton, Georgia. The cost to the city for their services will be $75 per hour. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that he was in agreement with the selection. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for approval. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve Carver and DeBoer as the city's public defender. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded. Motion carried unanimously. Item H, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized councilmember Jim Looney to discuss the city's personnel policy. Mr. Looney stated that he would like a committee formed to review the city's current personnel policies. Mayor Weaver stated that he would appoint a committee of himself, councilmember Ann Snavy, attorney Bill Pickett, finance director Lisa Hoyle, and human resource director Stella Brewer. Item I, under new business, Lisa Hoyle presented to council an application for reduced water sewer rates for approval. Ms. Hoyle stated that the person met the requirements for reduced rates. Following review by council, councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the application and councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of future real estate acquisition and councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. The meeting was closed. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. The meeting was reopened. Mayor Weaver stated that the city had made an offer to purchase property on East Spring Street at a cost of $165,000 upon approval by council. He stated that the property was approximately one acre and had two buildings on the property. He stated that the buildings could possibly be used to house city restrooms in the future. The property would be purchased and financed by the downtown development authority with the city being responsible for the debt payments. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to allow the city to move forward with the acquisition of the property, pending an inspection and an environmental study of the property. Councilmember Ann Snavy seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Economic developer Jerry Nat Patel gave a report to the city. Finance Director Lisa Hoyle gave the financial report for the month of September 2016. Lonnie Waters gave the animal control report for the month of September 2016. Mr. Waters also gave a report on the paving projects in the city. Chief Greg Level gave a report of police activities for the month of September 2016. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of September 2016. Being no other business to come before council, councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held November 7th, 2016.
Any further motion?
No more than a minute.
Second. Second. Motion is second. Discussion?
There's one thing in here.
While you're looking, the address for Murphy Oil.
Yeah, that was it. Thank you. It's Noah Drive.
Noah Drive in Philadelphia.
That was it. It's not Sammy McGee Boulevard. It's Noah Drive.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion? Being in our favor, put your hand. Thank you, council. Under old business, noise ordinance. Chief Level, would you please come forward? Mr. Pickett, I believe you're close enough. You can sit right there for discussion. Council, after the last meeting, we've had other activity and I'll recognize Chief Level to get the council up to speed and some recommendations to move forward if we can get into this.
Good evening, mayor and council. Since we met last time, Mr. I can't pronounce his name. I'll call him Dan. It's a couple of Rocco or something like that, but I call him Mr. Dan. We've issued a total of four citations. As a matter of fact, currently today, we went over initially one from a noise complaint stemming from Sunday about 17:25 hours. That's 5:00 in the afternoon. Since then, Mr. Dan has retained counsel. He has an attorney regarding this matter and has been discussing it with his attorney. And I met with Dan and I'll discuss a little bit more of that later. Our current ordinance, which was brought up by council, and I've mentioned it to Mr. Pickett as well, along with our solicitor Dave Myers, currently reads, under excessive noise bands shall be unlawful for any person to willfully continue to make or cause to be made, continue any excessive unnecessary or unusual loud noise which disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood or which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity residing in the city limits of Jasper. Our complainant and 95% of our complainants do not reside within the city limits of Jasper. They are county residents. So speaking with council, mayor, Mr. Pickett, we're going to have to take that part out. We're going to have to protect the community as a whole because right now that it could be dismissed because of that technicality. However, we did write him for the citation where it could be transferred to Superior Court, but again, he's not a city resident.
So he being Mr. Finley?
Being Mr. Finley, correct. He is complaining on several of these. In addition, I've researched Roswell, who has a very complex ordinance dealing with decibels, which we don't have a meter and we have nothing in our ordinance discussing certain decibels. In addition, Roswell has, you know, as you well know, they're a bigger city than Jasper and their fines are progressive. They go on starting first offense 500. Next one goes to 1,000. Next one goes to 2,000. I don't think we want to do that here in Jasper, but we do need to get more progressive with our fines. Right now, it's currently $250,000 and that would be up to council and city attorney on how you want to progress. I think the maximum the city can, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, is $2,000. That's the most the state allows us to. But meeting with Dan today, he is very receptive to this. He is in the process of, for those of y'all that's been in there before, he has windows and he's in the process of replacing all of his windows. The windows are very thin, if you've ever been over there, with sure enough true glasses, glass. He's going to in the summertime, close them. And he said, "I'm just going to fire my air conditioner." And then he made the suggestion that he would purchase a decimal meter, but we couldn't enforce it. And where Shane, Mr. Finley lives, because I have no jurisdiction over there, the police officer, the closest place we could put a meter and Dan said he would pay for it if we elect to go with decimal, decibels, is at the fog line on 515. That's where our jurisdiction ends, is right there, going northbound. That's as far as the city limits goes, the rest of the stuff. And all the neighbors around from Plum Lane is all county residents. But we have gave him citation. There's been thought about possibly dismissing him until we pre-ord our council or transferring him to Superior Court as well. So that's where we're at with this.
Okay, council, do they have a copy of the ordinance? Tony mentioned it, like he had a copy a second ago. I think, I think, I think, right now, Mr. Pickett, if you might chime in, if we remove that last paragraph dealing with residents of the city of Jasper, read that last sentence.
The last sentence where it says, "peace and quiet of any neighborhood or which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitivity residing within the city limits."
Okay, I believe if we put a period where it says sensitivity, we'll draw off trying to determine whether we're trying to protect just the citizens of Jasper and Pickens County. So that means a person in the county can complain about someone in the city making too much noise. Now, that does not clarify the decibels and all the things that we'll probably want to approach in the future because we're going to have to have all of our T's crossed and our I's dotted so that we don't discriminate against Rocco's nor the residents in the county or the residents in the city. And really and truly, just the council's information and chief touched on it, is that the owner of Rocco's has been understanding, understanding in this matter and is working to alleviate the issue.
He is.
But at the same time, that was not happening until we started doing what we're doing in order to protect the sensitivity of the citizens who live in the surrounding area of around 515. Now, this is a little more complicated. This sound issue is right on 515. And Greg, tell what you had information about what 515 sounds like.
I was in...
Oh, exactly. It's Elmore Parkway, if that...
I was in Rocco's days with this issue citation. It's loud, jack brakes. I mean, being as vulgar as I am, 515, but we can't stop that governor deal with us closing, so.
But it does give the defense some argument that what is, sometimes the decibel would probably go up with the noise of the road. So it's not going to be an easy matter, but working with a merchant or a restaurant owner who wants to play fair anyway, we need, we need to make sure that we have everything in our, that we don't discriminate on him or vice versa on the residents. So that's what we're working towards. But if I could get tonight, Mr. Pickett, if you could help me word this properly, to simply remove the last citizens of the city of Jasper.
Three words, yes.
Three, three words. And that will make our ordinance a little more clear and a little more fair because our city limits runs parallel with a lot of county property.
We'll take two readings to change it.
We will. We will. So this will be the first reading. As far as the fines, I mean, is that something or can the city judge and solicitor and you do that or do you want to...
Do we have the parameters already in place that we could escalate the judge could say, but this is probably going to be, we can set the fine.
We have a shop list, first fence, second fence, third. We did have those, but as far as the noise, we currently don't have $250.
The ordinance is, the city has already imposed on Rocco's Pub. Is there anything wrong? Did you say there were four?
Yes, four citations. Citations.
Really, do we want, do we want to enforce those or do we want to wait?
Well, they're in the court system now.
They're in the court system. He has a court date, I believe, of the 15th of November.
And they will face, they will face this ordinance as it reads, residents of the city. Shane is not a resident of the city and all the neighborhood across the road are county residents, but they're the ones that are getting the brunt of the vibrations at their home. And it's not after 10 o'clock necessarily.
Yeah, it's not. And I've had Dan, he said, "This is 5:00 in the afternoon." And I went on to explain, I said, "That ordinance is there for like, in my 20-year tenure here, we dealt with it, the trash men picking up trash over here at Cove Road. You know how they lift the dumpster up? They were picking up trash at 5:00 in the morning and waking everybody up on..." Matter of fact, Steve's mom, I've got a memory, Ramona Roper, and it sounded like a bomb going off. So we addressed that issue, had that issue citation. They eventually, we managed to quit picking up it early because we had ordinance in place. But excessive noise band would be, use something in humor, if Guns N' Roses and AC/DC move next door to you and at 11 o'clock on a Saturday morning decide to do a five-hour sound check, that would be excessive noise. So that's where that ordinance would come into place. The same as someone living in an apartment hearing the loud music at, you know, 10 o'clock. It's excessive, it's not legal.
But do we need to address escalating our, and he's working with us at this time and at $250 a pop is, if you get four of them, that's like $1,000 to me if he were to lose his case.
I would like to leave that issue alone until we decide what we're going to do about whether we're going to do decimals or...
We can, we can solve it right here just for our wording for the judge when he gets this reading to him at the next citation. But maybe we're getting our point across the point where we might not have to write any more citations at the moment. As town grows, we're going to have more.
If you're going to have an ordinance, it needs to be useful, so we need to make, make those corrections.
I don't, you said that, Dan said that he was going to put thicker windows in.
He is, he's in the process. He's met with Mr. Underwood, the building department, and he's in the process of working process. It won't happen tomorrow, but he's working.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, if he's going to put in thicker windows in terms of AC, that's going to be on the inside, correct?
Should solve the outside problem.
Should, yes. I'm on hold.
But the band's outside on patio where there's, where there's no windows.
The last time I was over there, we had the bike issue, the band was inside.
I mean, most of the time I've been, the band's on the outside where there's no windows and in the wintertime, he drops those plastic curtains down in terms of heat or something.
Well, that will have, hopefully we're going to address that. But for our dealings tonight, if we can just get a motion, this will be the first reading, to remove those last three words from our existing ordinance, we can, the next reading next month, we can continue writing citations this month based on residents of the city of Jasper, and that's a good arguing point for an attorney saying this does not affect my client because this person who is complaining says differently.
Comic of motion that...
Top one highlighted, yeah.
26, section 26, line 56, I guess that is, excessive sound bands, that the words within the city.
Residing. Residing within...
Residing within the city.
Or by...
Removing the words residing within the city limits.
Okay.
From the ordinance 2656.
Okay, this will be considered the first reading?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, council. Anything else to add, chief?
They talked about those decimals. I had Detective Cochrane look into those, the decibels things and to get one, $3,000, it has to be calibrated every year at a cost of $200 to $400 and that's very, very expensive. I know you've got an app on your phone, you can measure them, but as far as a quarter law, wouldn't you need a certified one that's calibrated just like we have?
Just like breathalyzer.
Breathalyzer and we have, we weigh narcotics, it has to be calibrated and stuff like that. You know, that's, that's a lot of money I don't know if I'm going to be spending for that.
And based on someone's sensitivity, they would get to go before the judge, whether it be a city judge or magistrate, and explain to them with probably half the neighborhood that we're not being fastidious. We are really being affected by this continuous noise and I think a good-minded judge would see their point and, and we have done what we've tried to do to get everybody to the table, discuss the issue, and someone may be fined and maybe we may have to come back to it again, but this is going to allow us to continue doing our job to slow down or arrest the noise.
Did you second the motion?
I did, I thought you did. Did give me the second motion. Well, he did the first reading, so we're good right now. So next month, we'll do the final motion and vote. Thank you, chief.
And I do appreciate the restaurant owner attitude on the...
Thank you.
Very well.
I'm really...
And he's sympathetic, actually.
He really is.
He's working.
Wonderful.
Item B, under old business, alcohol license, Murphy Oil.
Mayor, council, we got the background check back on Mr. Ryan White, who is going to be the manager of the Murphy Oil Express and he'll be the registered agent, and there's, there's nothing in there that would disqualify them from getting an alcohol license, so I'd like for the council to approve that.
Okay, so at this vote, they will be able to get their license, be able to issue that? Well, that's what this, everything's been completed, did you say? Okay, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we allow Ryan, excuse me, Murphy Express to, they've done all the advertising?
Yes.
So it's, issue a alcohol beverage permit license, the name, the application.
They've already done that, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, that's given her a moment. You got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Any further discussion? Being in our favor, put your hand. Thank you, council. Thank you, Sonny. You're still up under new business. Alcohol license approval, Walmart.
Walmart has a new manager and he came in, we sent him to the police station to do a background check and his came back good also, so I would like to...
Approve the due agent.
To approve the new manager for Walmart.
Entertain a motion. Motion to approve the new manager of Walmart liquor alcohol license. Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Being in our favor, put your hand. Thank you, council. Item B, alcohol license renewal for 2017.
All right, the council has...
The council has a list of the... I've gotten 18 people who have paid for their license for 2017 so far for the... To be renewed in November. So we still have 13 left that you will have to approve in the December meeting.
Okay. We don't need to call those by name, do we? Since there's 18 of them. So we entertain a motion to approve as presented.
I gave you one of those.
Okay. Motion to approve the renewals. Got a motion to approve. Motion is second. Discussion? Ben, not all favor, but with your hand?
A second.
I heard you say first.
I think no.
Thank you, Sonny. Item C, presentation of 2017 operating budget. Ms. Hoyle.
You all have a copy, a bound copy of the proposed budget for next year. And I'm just going to go over some of the highlights of the changes in the current year's budget. The first section, I believe it starts on page one after the table contents, are the budget totals, kind of a summary of the entire budget of the city. And the first section, all funds revenue. I'll go ahead and start with that. The total funds, all funds revenue increased $499,321, 2017 over 2016. And I'll just highlight the main increases in that. The general revenue fund increased $210,731 over last year or over the current year. And this is due to additional lease proceeds of $176,000. As the finance committee and us, we all just discussed this. The mayor, we're budgeting for 10 new vehicles spread from the general fund through the water fund for next year. And we're planning on financing those vehicles through GMA Financing. Another addition, we had... I budgeted for $41,000 in grants. And that's the emergency generator grant for the police department, which wasn't budgeted for 2016 due to that's an addition to the total grant that we had asked for. $12,000 addition to background and fingerprint fees due to the increase in that from the schools that we're doing now. That also increased just as much almost in the expenses when we get down to that. There was some decrease. We moved the Lamig grant, which normally would have shown up in the general fund to SLOSS fund. That was $55,000 last year. We did not increase property taxes. They remain the same. We increased bank business licenses up $30,000 based on how that turned out this year. We're hoping to at least get the same amount next year. As you can see, the 2008 SLOSS fund is gone. We spent all that money this year. 2014 SLOSS went up $167,000. And that's due to... I went ahead and budgeted. Hopefully, we'll get the DNR Trails grant. And I moved the Lamig to this department, to this fund. So that's $100,000 grant and $72,000 Lamig. That's the DOT money we get for paving every year. Water fund is up $98,000 over the prior year's budget. We've increased meter installations, $45,000. Water sewer receipts increased $8,000. And that's based on how it's looking this year. So we're doing better with that. Grants. We had budgeted several grants in there for 2016 due to the generators. And actually, they went down a little because we've spent some of that already this year. I booked it at 75% for next year of what we're actually going to receive. Solid waste. Solid waste looks a lot different. And that's due to some reallocation. We had never really had the amount of salaries in there that we should. And we've increased... So we had to increase expenses. So we had to increase the support to cover those expenses from the water fund. The water fund supports the solid waste fund. And municipal court fund, it's increased about $32,000. And that's due to the jail fee that we started booking this year. We're collecting it off tickets. So that increased the revenue there. If you go to the... We'll start looking at expenses now. Governmental funds, this is on page two. Governmental funds overall expense increased almost $211,000. I won't go over every one of these departments. But legislative department increased at almost $35,000. And that was due mainly to the group insurance increase. We increased group insurance overall of about 12% because that's what our insurance guy suggested. Also, y'all had voted for an additional public official liability insurance when Joe presented it last year. That increased the liability insurance almost $20,000 over the prior year, what we had budgeted. Executive department is increased about $19,000. And that's mainly due to we're going to purchase a new vehicle. Half of that vehicle is in this department. Half of it went to the water administrative department. Another big increase, if you look at the police department, we increased about 100, almost $115,000. That's due to the generators. $50,000 is due to the new generator capital outlay that's going into that from the grant. Most of that's covered by the grant. Salaries increased $55,000. And that's due to salaries and benefits. That's a lot due to the group insurance. And plus, that's one of our biggest salaries are in the police department. And also, background checks, an additional $17,000. We expect expenditures there. Fire department increased $83,000. Most of that is salaries. We did have some additional equipment purchases necessary in that department. Street department went down, actually. We had... Well, we've lost a few employees. And we moved some employees from street to water. Look on down. Planning and zoning department is down almost $36,000. And that's due to we had actually two, a salary and a half in there. Budgeted for 16. And now we're splitting a salary between that department and the water fund. A department and the water fund. And debt service, of course, went up a lot because of the debt that we're planning on taking on for the new purchases. Not a whole lot of change in municipal court fund. That's Fund 201. Confiscated assets, not a whole lot of change. Hotel motel stayed pretty flat. And of course, the 2008 SLOSS fund is gone. I'm on page three now. And the 2014 SLOSS, of course, went up. I've mentioned earlier, the expenses, expenditures went up due to the Lamig money that we're planning on spending and the additional money for the Trails grant. Page four, under enterprise funds. Overall expenditures increased $264,000. A lot of that, let's see, I'll just go... I'll go line my line on the major ones that increased sewer maintenance, up $108,300. And that's mainly due to salary reclassifications. Water administration, 44100 apartment, up $101,400. And that's mainly due to the additional support. This is where we booked the additional support to the sanitation department. Told you we had reclassified salaries to sanitation to make it more realistic. Meter reading, we had to increase salaries in that department. And also depreciation increased because of the... We're planning on purchasing the three meter, three meter reading trucks in that department. That will, of course, make our depreciation in that department go up. Water supply went down, and that's due to some salary reclassifications. Water treatment plant went up and is due mostly to some additional interest. Water distribution actually went down. We reclassified salaries out of that department. And water fleet went up $49,000. We moved an additional salary there. We're trying to... We've tried to reclass a lot of the salaries to make it more realistic to where they actually are working at this time. And solid waste, Fund 540, our sanitation department. I think I've explained that. We've increased it to more realistically reflect of what the expenses are in that department. For the enterprise funds, if you come down at the bottom of that page, I show a cash flow. Because the enterprise funds are booked more like a business and not like the governmental funds, I'm showing this cash flow to show actually how the money's going to come in and go back out. So we take the net income in the water fund, $361,836 budgeted, and omit the noncash items, which is depreciation. So add back $768,000. Take, subtract off the principal payments and subtract off... We've budgeted to make a payment on the contract outstanding we have with Holton, $50,000. And I've subtracted off the non-financed capital outlay that we've budgeted in the water fund. And that still leaves us a small amount of cash if we do everything that we're trying to budget for next year. The last fund, I was going to go over the expenditures in the municipal court. And that, of course, the expenses increased. I went over, we're taking in more ticket money due to the sheriff's jail contract. And so we're having to spend that money back out. So that fund increased $30,000. And that's all I had to go over unless y'all have some questions.
Questions, counsel? It's a lot of work, Lisa. We thank you, counsel. Okay. So I guess we would entertain a motion to accept this operating budget for 2017?
Public hearing next week.
That is correct. But we're not there yet, are we?
A week from now.
We gotta go do this again.
In two weeks from now.
I apologize. This is a presentation. I would like to approve that. Okay. At this time...
Do you want to announce the public hearing? I guess it will be in the paper, Lisa.
It will. It's already been advertised in the last couple of weeks, I guess.
What's the date?
Sorry, I missed that.
The 14th. It's a public hearing.
14th.
And the 21st, hopefully, will adopt the budget. And I'll put it a different advertisement in next week. So a week ahead of time, people can see that that's when we're going to adopt the budget.
Thank you. Item D is a real property or real estate issue that we're going to need to have just a few minutes with counsel. And then we'll come back and we'll tell you what we talked about. Because I hope to get some action. But with that, we entertain a motion to go into executive session. Oh, I am sorry. I want to do one more thing. Real estate financing E Spring Street, which is the next item D. Lisa, would you help me out since I'm bunging around with the agenda?
Yes. I put a kind of a summary of what we had called probably a week and a half ago and got some quotes from different banks concerning the financing.
Let me explain this moment, Lisa. This is dealing with the property we bought last month, what used to be the Dr. Pro, Dr. Building, which is part of our park. And the counsel approved purchasing property. We paid cash for it out of our accounts. And now we want to transfer that so we get our operating capital back. So we want to transfer that over to the development authority. Now, Lisa, explain what I just said.
Yes. And so it was purchased in the development authority's name, if I'm correct. Is that right? Are we going to transfer it?
I think it was purchased in the city's name.
Yeah. We actually wrote the check for it, I know.
Explain a little bit since we've gotten into this can while we have to do this, while the city can't just...
Well, the city cannot have debt, a note at the end of the calendar year. We can have a lease, but we cannot have on a note at the end of the year. So that's why we're going through the development authority. And I had called GMA to see if they did lease purchases for cities. And I think she told me it wouldn't be worth it really unless the property was $600,000 or $700,000. So this is kind of our only option. But anyway, as you can see, we called United Community Bank, Community Bank of Pickens, Renaissance Bank, Stern Bank, and Lindsay may have called some more. But these are who got back with us on some quotes. And it looks to be the United Community Bank at that, at this time, has the lowest rate of 4.46. If we make a down payment of 20%, and that rate would be fixed for five years with a 10-year balloon. And the payments are based on a 20-year payback. I estimated these monthly payments in the column of estimated. It's not a big difference in, you know, the monthly payments. And all of these estimations, the payments, are based on a 20% down payment and a 20-year payback at these various rates at the different banks that quoted.
Okay. So now we need a motion to approve transferring this to the development authority to make the loan in their name. And then the development authority will then write a check back to the city of Jasper, and the note will be in the authority's name. We entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We financed property. You want us to go ahead and accept the rate in the same motion or two motions?
I think accept allow the development authority to make the loan so the property will be in the development authority's name, not the city of Jasper. And that, and if you will just add that low note. The development authority will choose that low interest with your recommendation for the motion. Try that again. I apologize.
No. I asked a question. I make a motion that we allow the... Ask or allow the development authority to make this purchase for the city in that we repay the note over whatever time is accepted.
Okay. Thank you, second. Motion is second. Discussion? Ben, not all favor, but with your hands? Thank you, counsel. With that, we do move the next item, which looks very much like that item, is that the city council needs to discuss real estate financing or property financing. And we need about 10 minutes or so. And I apologize for you having to step out. But I will need David Hall to stay with me, David McCannon. And that's about it. And of course, the city attorney and the city clerk. Entertain a motion to come out of executive session. A motion to come out?
Second.
Discussion? Ben, not all favor, but with your hand? Thank you.
We will get Johnny's watch fixed Monday. We have over 10 minutes to this next time.
Was that more than 10 minutes?
Who's counting?
Yeah. Who's counting? Okay. Now, if we might explain to the public a little bit of what we were dealing with. The city of Jasper is interested in negotiating for a whale that is a potential hive producer. And the city of Jasper is going to have to pay for a pump test, a 14-day pump test. And the figure that we're looking at is $25,000 for this pump test to determine whether or not we would be interested in pursuing this particular whale for future water source for the city of Jasper. whale for future water source for the city of Jasper. And it's important that we went into closed session to discuss those, because if the council decides not to do this, we will not have to reveal what property we're looking at and what other case may be, but we're going to hold up that until we start the pump test, and once we do, I think everything will be clear, and, but there's still some negotiations that has to be done with the property owners that we need to be able to, and I'd like to have the council give me permission to continue the negotiations, if you will, when you prepare the motion. But with that, the city is going to need to spend, Dave, you said twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand?
What do you think for Ben?
We better took five thousand in right now for engineering, so let's make it thirty thousand. I didn't think about that. Wish we negotiated that before we threw that, Ben maybe won't watch this on the internet. Plus five thousand for engineering, and, you know, there will be a person that will monitor the whales, so that will cover that as well as the twenty-five thousand. So, let's say thirty thousand dollars for this project, and permission for myself, also Jim, if you will, when you make this motion?
Let's make two motions. Let's do the first motion to allow city manager to negotiate with property owners a potential lease of a well site.
Okay, and a motion to approve, you said thirty thousand?
No, no.
There'll be a negotiation.
Just to negotiate.
Okay, got a motion to approve city manager negotiate with the property owners.
Property owners.
Give you a second. Motion, second. Discussion? Ben, in all favor, with your hands. Thank you. Now, with that, second motion, Jim?
Is to allow city manager to do a engineering study and well test, pressure test.
Pump test.
Pump test on...
A fourteen-day pump test.
Fourteen-day pump test on a well site not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. Second. Got a motion, second. Discussion? Ben, in all favor, with your hands. Thank you, council. Okay. Economic Development Report, chairing.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, and yes, this setup is like we're really up close and personal tonight. The two things I want to share with you, we've had the city representatives to discuss the New Year's events that take place in the city. We then circled back with Lonnie. We instructed our tourism director to create a marketing plan, so she went out and called around, see what other communities were having events, looking for areas where they were not having anything significant, so that when we devised our marketing plan and thus our expenditures, we're spending the money where we'll have the most impact and the greatest potential of bringing people in. And so we'll be working very closely with the city, with Lonnie, on putting that together and putting it in place, obviously taking what he has done in the past and just trying to refine it a little bit more, so again, we get the best return on our advertising dollars that we can get. So, that's moving forward very nicely. The other thing I wanted to share with you is the entertainment industry. We had another group come out and look at a tow property last week. The activity's really ramped up a lot, and the thing that I wanted to share, two things that I found very interesting. One, as I mentioned before, that a BBC production company came into town, looked at several sites, it's been a couple of months back. They contacted me again because they wanted to come back to the locations and do some tests, filming, and what I found is really rather interesting, or I found it very interesting, and that is, many years ago, there was a children's show called Teletubbies, and some of y'all might have had children of that age, or maybe grandchildren, and a lot of people found it very irritating, but the show was extremely successful, it was distributed worldwide, and was on the air for years and years and years. Well, the two individuals that was part of this production team, they were the ones that created and produced that show, and it's just pretty wild that, you know, we had the guys here, actually the man and the woman that created and produced Teletubbies, and I just found that kind of fascinating, because, you know, who would have thought that at one point, that we'd have Clint Eastwood in town, and the guy that created Teletubbies and stuff like that. So, the entertainment business in Georgia really is kind of fascinating, but where it becomes valuable to us, for example, in Sonoya in 2010, they hit five businesses on Main Street. The Vampire Diaries came into town and started production there, and they've been in production for several years. They now have fifty businesses in their downtown area and on Main Street. That movie, or that TV series, is attributed with contributing between sixty and eighty million dollars to that community every year. So, it's tremendous. So, you know, I think sometimes people wonder why we spend the time pursuing these things, and a lot of what we get are one-off, and, you know, most of them don't come to pass, but the reason why is because it does have such tremendous potential, and it's the series, and I've mentioned that before, when you have a series coming into your community is when you can get a really great return on it, and that's an example. I mean, certainly, I don't know if we would necessarily want fifty businesses in downtown, because that's kind of a game changer, but they do have the potential to do that. So, I just wanted to share that with you, the same thing. That's really all I had for tonight, unless there's any questions, and I'll be glad to answer those at this point.
Questions, council?
If you will, give me a call to discuss the budget for the year's evening.
Financial report, Lisa, believe it or not.
More numbers. You have in your packet a copy of the financial report for the month of October, and I'm sorry, I think I forgot to bring you the checks over five thousand dollars. I had so much to put together, but if it's okay, I'll bring that next month, for the two months.
Send us that email when you're ready.
Okay. General fund, first page of the report, we collected in October ninety-two thousand two hundred and thirty dollars in lost money, local option sales tax. Year-to-date, that's eight hundred and eighty thousand four sixty-three. That's in comparison to two thousand and fifteen, at this point in time, we had collected eight seventy-two nine sixty-three. We had a pretty good month for October. We did mail the property tax bills out, they've been mailed out, and people have started receiving them. The due date is January thirtieth of seventeen. Moving along, hotel motel, we didn't make the payment for the third quarter to the chamber to cover three quarters of the year. Two thousand and sixteen, we've received a total of sixty-two thousand dollars, and compared to sixty thousand fifty-five dollars in two thousand and fifteen. SLOSS money, at this point, we have a cash balance of one hundred and ninety-three thousand two thirty-seven, with only four thousand committed, and that's to pay off the rest of Kim and Horn, which leaves us one hundred and eighty-nine thousand for two thousand and sixteen. Year-to-date, we've collected six hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and eight dollars, compared to six hundred and seventy-nine thousand two ninety-five two thousand and fifteen. Water and sewer fund, we're slightly below collections, but a lot of that has to do with the generator funds that I had budgeted for that are moved into two thousand and seventeen, eighty-three percent. We should be at eighty-three percent of our budget and expenditures, and we're at eighty-two percent, and going back to the general fund, we were well below that percentage as well. And that's about all the high loss I had to go over, unless y'all have some questions.
Questions, council?
Thank you again, Lisa. Item C, Lonnie Waters is not listed this evening, so out of town, so, and control report be bypassed. Item D, Chief Love?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Justice Police Department for the month of October responded to eight hundred and seventy-eight calls from service, the nine-one-one center responded to sixty-seven motor vehicle accidents, seventy-four citations for the following, one DUI, forty-one speeding, three-seat belt, free shoplifting, two uninsured motorists, twenty miscellaneous violations, four suspended or revoked, Georgia State Bureau issued a total of thirty-two citations for grand total in City Court. One hundred and six, total of nine state warrants were taken for the following, two for burglary, felony misdemeanor, obstruction, disorder of conduct, misdemeanor, felony shoplifting, felony, misdemeanor shoplifting, one theft by taking, misdemeanor, one simple battery, misdemeanor, and one simple battery on the Family Violence Act. Miscellaneous calls answered, thirty-three alarm calls, twenty-one disorderly, forty-eight harassment, four trespassing or roaring, seventy-one suspicious activity calls, and twenty-eight domestic disputes in the neighborhood, and one burger.
Chief, any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the month of October, the city's fire department responded to a hundred and twenty calls. Those were no structure fires inside, five outside the city, no vehicle fires in or out, seven grass fires inside, nine outside, twelve motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, two outside, fifty-two emergency medical responses in, twenty-one out, eight other calls in, thirteen outside, as always, anything not listed. As of the end of the month, eleven hundred and sixty calls. Our inspection looked at one set of plans for renovation and conducted sixteen inspections.
Questions, council? Thank you, chief. John, KYSF?
Football's wrapped up, everybody's turning in their equipment, get all that took care of. Wrestling's all strong, practicing Tuesdays and Thursdays, and everybody's getting ready and planning on baseball season, so, active as ever.
Being no other business, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.